Yes, Chairman. You're right.
Good morning and welcome to our April 16, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting, and I ask Commissioner Dawkins, Lisa Nivak.
It's my way heads. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, your wisdom, and your support as we begin this meeting. Help us to encourage and engage in meaningful discussion. Allow us to grow closer as a group and foster the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that will affect the citizens of Wayne County. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Let's stand for a place, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. I have approval with the minutes, April 2nd meeting.
Same move.
Most to made, any discussion? All in favor, please, six, five, raise your right hand. Our discussion, just agenda, Mr. Honeycutt.
No adjustments this time.
Any board member? All right, most to approve?
Most to approve.
Most to approve, any discussion? No discussion, all, favors for six, five, raise your right hand. Special presentation, Mr. Honeycutt.
We do have our some teams that we will be doing, and what we would like to ask is for each group, if you will come and stand in front and have your pictures taken, and board will stand up.
All right, we'll be moving to one, two, three, four, five, and so you will, we're gonna do them by groups, correct?
Right.
So, all right, fantastic. All right, the first one goes to Tequila Austin with the library, and I hope I said that right. Kay Arnett with the Health Department. Bonnie Bruce, Health Department. Christopher Campbell with the Sheriff's Office. Christopher Dawson with Facilities. Brian Donahue, DSS. Levante Ingram with the jail. Monica Catter Henry with the Health Department. Matthew Marino with the Sheriff's Office. Gary and Mason with the jail. Rajal Patel with the Health Department. Sharika Wadsworth, DSS. Phyllis Walters, Health Department. Jessica Ward, DSS. Esmerelda Whitley, Health Department. Sarah West, Emergency Medical Services. Uh, no, I butchered that, I'm so sorry. Jacqueline Hudson, Emergency Medical Services. Miranda Lipscomb with Facilities. Stephen Taylor, Emergency Medical Services. And Regina White, Facilities. All right, sorry, gonna double as photographer here. Just take a sit, so. Thank you very much. All right, we don't have to do that again, they're getting the picture from in the, uh... Oh, okay. Thank you, Joel. Thank you, Joel. All right, for our five-year pins, beginning with Remarco Atkinson, School Resource Officer. Maurice Green with Facilities. Maurice Harden with the jail. Geraldine Lee, Human Resources.
Only five years? And get ready for that.
Kristy Mason with the Health Department. Pamela Newcomb with the Library. And Bradley Whitmire with the Sheriff's Office. Apparently, if you guys just stare straight ahead, Joel is magically taking your picture.
Sure.
And I think that's probably good, thank you very much. All right, and next will be our 10-year service pins, beginning with Albert Anders, Jr., with the jail.
You have to say junior, didn't you?
But it says it. Richard Carmack with the jail. Lisa Johnson with Health, Family Planning. Devin Green with the jail. Taiwan Miller with the jail.
Would you leave them all at work?
Next will be our 15-year service pins, and we'll begin with Janelle Nava with DSS. Terrence Sutton, Sheriff's Office, thank you for being here. William Tark with the Sheriff's Office. Tammy Lance, DSS. Matt Miller, Sheriff's Office. Just kinda look ahead, and he'll take your picture in two. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Next will be our 20-year. We'll begin with Renee Artis with 4H. Sharon Corniggy with DSS. And Ms. McCullen, I hope I don't mess up your first name, Regina? All right, let's all applaud him one more time. All right, hopefully he got that picture while we were doing that. Thank you, ladies. All right, and then next two, I think we'll just, well, we'll let each one of them stand here for a moment, because these are pretty significant. For 25 years, Ms. Tina Williams with the Health Department. Thank you very much, congratulations. And then our final one, last but not least, 35 years, Mr. Tim Rogers, Solid Waste Department.
Tim let it put up a lot of gawkers for 35.
Any board member have a comment they can make? Thanks to everyone being here, and congratulations on your service pin this morning. Mr. Honeycutt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next, we do have a motion to approve the proclamation for the National Day of Prayer. And I do believe we have... Who would like to?
Behind you.
Behind you. Behind you.
Whereas, May 2nd, 2019, is the 68th Annual Observance of the National Day of Prayer, and whereas the Continental Congress in 1775 asked the colonies to pray for wisdom in forming a nation, and whereas the Senate of the United States devoutly recognizing the supreme authority and just government of Almighty God and all affairs of men and of nations, has by a resolution requested the President to designate and set apart a day for national prayer and humiliation. And whereas in 1863, President Abraham Lincoln proclaimed a day of fasting and prayer, and whereas in 1952, President Harry Truman signed a joint resolution by the United States Congress declaring an annual National Day of Prayer, and whereas in 1988, President Ronald Reagan signed an amended law permanently setting the National Day of Prayer as the first Thursday of every May, and whereas in 1988, the United States Congress passed a law directing the President to issue a proclamation each year designating the first Thursday in May as a national day of prayer on which the people in the country may turn to God in prayer and meditation at churches, in groups, and as individuals. And whereas the Wayne County Board of Commissioners believes prayer is an important part to our nation and community at this time, as it was in the 1700s, and whereas those participating in the National Day of Prayer will pray for the governments, the churches, the brave men and women serving in our armed forces, families, education, the media, businesses, and the economy. All this being done in sincerity and truth, let us then rest humbly in the hope authorized by the divine teachings that the united cry of the nation will be heard on high and answered with blessings no less than the pardon of our national sins and the restoration of our now divided and suffering country to its former happy condition of unity and peace. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim May 2nd, 2019, as a day of prayer in Wayne County, in observance of National Day of Prayer, and commends this observation to our citizens. The, and the National Day of Prayer service for the past several years has been at the YMCA, and we would love for all of you guys to be there if you can. It starts at 7:00 PM in the YMCA gymnasium. I think you will be pleased and astonished at the amount of people that attend and the cross-section of our community that attends. It's one time during the year when we can come together as a group, and praise God.
The site, what did you just?
It's a Goldsboro Family YMCA. It's on 1105 Parkway Drive.
And the time is what?
7:00 PM.
7:00?
7:00 PM.
Thank you.
And I do want to introduce our CEO. This is Bruce Griffin, he's our new CEO, joined us back in November, and this is gonna be his first National Day of Prayer at the Y, and we're very, very proud of what our community does with this Day of Prayer.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
We did end a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the proclamation for the National Day of Prayer as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Mayo. I've heard the motion, any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say, I've attended it several times, and I have really been impressed with the people that they asked to pray and participate in that. We've had some very important people for Wayne County to participate, the base commander has been involved, some of our surgeons, just great, great people. And also, question for the Madam Clerk in Court Res, number nine. I mean, is this a cut and dry, can it be changed in any way in the future? Not this one, but I'd like to, I'd like to see where it says Armed Forces, Families, Education, Media, Business, and Economy. I'd like to see first responders in there somewhere.
Yes, sir, I will have that, absolutely.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I've attended the National Day of Prayer, but I've also attended some local churches around over the years, and my point is, thank you for doing this. We need, we actually need, in our country, and I think most also agree, we need to have a National Day of Prayer every day. And so, let's, let's don't just do this individually as a National Day of Prayer, let's make it a point to pray every day individually for our county, our state, and our country. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I would just like to, Mr. Mayo is so complete sometimes. Every day, in the state of our country right this day, we all need to pray for our country, because it is drifting like a ship out on sea that the mola is sort of spurring. So, thank you, Mr. Mayo. We need to recognize the need to pray every day for our country. Thank you.
All right, thank you for the comments. All in favor, please, six, five, raise your right hand.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next, we have recognition for the National Day of Service, and we just have to approve.
Good morning. Good morning.
Good morning.
We do sometimes in church when the preacher says something. Anyway, good morning to everybody. We are so glad to be here again this year, and we're so grateful to the county, county commissioners, for recognizing what our senior volunteers do, what they provide to the citizens of Wayne County. I am Delbra McIntyre, and I am the Adult Services, or I say Adult Services, because I want you all to know that I'm a retired Wayne County employee, isn't that right, Mr. Parker?
Absolutely.
Very proud employee, retired from Wayne County. And my staff is here with me today, and guess what? They are also retirees of Wayne County. So, we're continuing to give back to the county. I have Ms. Clara Murray, who is also retired from the Wayne County DSS, and Ms. Barry Waters, who is retired from the Wayne County Public Library. So, we are continuing to do what you all let us do from the beginning. In our young age, we worked for the county, and now that we're seniors, we are still working for the county. Thank you again so much for this opportunity. And I want to say to you that our senior volunteers, just for the month of March, have provided a total of 19,746 volunteer service hours to elderly citizens and children here in Wayne County. So, you all, county commissioners, you budget people, think about the amount of money that we're saving you, because they're volunteering their time and service to give to the citizens of Wayne County. And I'd like for my staff, as well as the members of the wages, foster-grandparent, and senior companion programs, to stand as we read the proclamation that's been prepared just for them. Whereas, the Corporation for National and Community Service is a federal agency that helps more than 5 million Americans improve the lives of their fellow citizens through service, and whereas over 280 volunteers and service members serve Wayne County residents year-round through the foster-grandparent and senior companion programs, and whereas foster-grandparents are role models, mentors, and friends to children with exceptional needs, the program provides a way for volunteers ages 55 and over to stay active by serving children and youth in their communities. Foster-grandparents help children learn to read and provide one-on-one tutoring, mentor troubled teenagers and young mothers, and care for premature infants and children with disabilities. And whereas, senior companions make a difference by providing assistance and friendship to adults who have difficulty with daily living activities such as shopping or paying bills. Senior companions help these adults remain independent in their homes instead of having to move to more costly institutional care facilities. Senior companions give families or professional caregivers much-needed time off from their duties, run errands, and often provide friendship for their clients. Now therefore be it resolved, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim April 2nd, 2019, as Wayne County Recognition Day for national service. And we do have to take a picture. We apologize. We have to take a picture with a banner, so we need for our volunteers to, if they can't come around, if you all will come, so that we can show that you all gave us this proclamation during this most important time. Again, we thank you, and thank you all so much for your support to us, and we do invite you to come when we have recognition events, and we promise we'll feed you real good.
Stand.
And our oldest volunteer is 92 years old.
Mr. Chairman, I might make a motion to approve the resolutions, Red.
Motion made, approve proclamation. Any discussion, Mr. Chairman?
I would just like to thank the entire group before they leave for the work that you're doing, and out in the community, there are folk who need to see you, and I know what you do for them is important. I just wonder why the lady who was speaking did not get her picture made. Why weren't you up there?
It's all about the volunteers. We'd like them to have all of them. We do appreciate you, thank you so much.
But, all right, before the group leaves, I'd like to say that what we just witnessed a few minutes, over the last few minutes, is where the rubber meets the road in our community. We need, we need a lot more people to step forward, and with the commitment that you have made to the citizens of Wayne County. I know beyond a shadow of a doubt that you are helping people that truly need help. So, thank you for all your volunteer hours and the work that you're doing. Thank you so much, we need more of that.
All right, motion's been made, all in favor, six, five, raise your right hand, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next on our agenda is introduction of our new 911 director, Chris Barnes, and Chris is here today, and we really do appreciate it. As the boards aware, since the resignation of Daniel Wiggins, our former 911 director, Chris has served as the interim role. We went out and advertised and interviewed for the position. I do want to thank Commissioner Acock, Sheriff Pierce, Chip, Ginger with HR, and myself. We set out as an interview board, and it's nice when you go through the process and we can promote from one from within the county. Chris has worked with the county for over 10 years. He started as a telecommunication, a telecommunications, and he recently served as our 911 database manager. And again, we were, after he was hired, when he met with Chip and myself, we kinda gave him a list of priorities, and I think some hair fell out during that time, especially with the 911 center. Hopefully, we're gonna have a groundbreaking fairly soon on that moving forward. So, but Chris has worked well with Ryan, Ryan Preble was also part of that interview board, but I appreciate the work that Chris has done in the past, and we're excited about Chris and his new role and opportunity moving the department forward in the future. So, Chris, if you want to stand up and say a couple of words?
Sure. Sure. Thank you very much for that introduction. I'm very honored to take on this task, a little bit daunted with the new 911 center, but very, very excited what it means for the citizens of Wayne County and for 911. I did want to take this opportunity, opportunity to publicly thank you for your support for the 911 center. It means a great deal to all of us to have a new facility. I will certainly do my very best to make sure that we are gonna push forward and be something, that the 911 center will be something that you guys can be proud of, that I'll be proud of, and the citizens of Wayne County will be proud of. And in a way to kinda push the spotlight off of me, I did want to extend to you guys just a small token of our appreciation. It was actually very fitting that we're here today, because this week is National Telecommunicators Week, when we honored those rarely seen but always heard voices in the background. That's why I'm wearing my Thin Gold Line flag today, is in honor of them. So, if I may, I have something for you guys, and I'd like for you to wear it, if you would, please, in honor of these guys this week. It's got a little bit in here about what the Thin Gold Line is all about and what it means to be a... and what it means to be a communicator.
Thank you. Thank you.
Again, thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. Thank you all your support.
And, Mr. Chairman, I also want to thank Chris as well. We're going to do a lot of different things, training and a lot of different protocols, and I'm excited about what he has done and what he will be doing. So, we do appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, before we leave this segment, thank you very much for having the opportunity, a center that role. But I live in Mount Olive, and it's often been said that when you do a 911 call for help, it takes eight minutes. It's probably eight minutes to get to a site. In the past, there's been some question whether an average of eight minutes was eight minutes. And when you count all the sites that somebody can get to in the city, and you average them with Mount Olive, it could be four or five minutes in the city. But is it true that it could be 12 or 13 minutes? Because that needs to be cleared up. It's like anything else that you use percentages and add a whole bunch of numbers together and then divide them by some number.
You know, response times can vary, absolutely. And a lot of that is based upon district. It's based upon how busy the system is at the time. But I think, you know, after talking with Mr. Honeycutt, I think the ultimate push for us that we'd like to do is to go towards protocols. And when we have an emergency medical dispatch protocol in place, ultimately, you're getting help faster. So, my folks can walk you through, you know, pre-arrival instructions, CPR instructions, that sort of thing. So, essentially, we're going to be reducing those response times. So, I think going forward, that's the push that we want to make.
So, the answer to that is for the most outlying areas in north and southern Wayne County, from Mount Olive up to Pikeville, Fremont.
If you remember on our EMS stations, the reason why we have the new ones that are coming onboard, and we'll talk about Nahuna in a little bit as well, is we basically took a diet and said, "Give me eight minutes from each spot that we'll be able to reach." So, that was the goal, once we build all of our EMS stations. You know, we still have the Nahuna station. We still have the Mount Olive station, and Miller's Chapel Road come online. So, but once we have all those stations in place, there should not be any parcel that is farther than eight minutes from a EMS station within Wayne County.
Okay, second part of communications. Say I'm somewhere in Wayne County, and I'm in my truck, and all of a sudden I need help, and I called 9, you know, for 911 help, and I'm out on 55 West someplace. All of a sudden, I unfortunately arrived to a point where I can't respond anymore. Is there any way, communication with my cell phone? What are you going, what's going to happen?
Years ago, the phone companies got together with 911, and there's something that's been instituted that is Phase 2 information, right? So, Phase 2 information will give my telecommunicators in the 911 center, should give them a location. It's a Latin long location. So, if nothing more, we can pinpoint 50-yard radius of where you're at and get help there. You know, certainly, it would be a challenge to find you in a situation like that, but it's not one that's unheard of and one that we certainly tackle very often, actually. Does that answer that question?
That takes me into the ballpark of...
We've got you.
There's help coming.
We got you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Congratulations. Now, we'll have...
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry.
I'd just like to make one brief comment. Commissioner Kamard and I was down at the reverse drawing back last month, and a citizen passed out and they called EMS, I guess 911, to call 911. And we decided that we'd take the privilege of timing them from the time that they got the call. Now, they was there at 7 minutes and 59 seconds.
Someone announced, said John Bell is reverting back on the job because he's timing right now. And John was more accurate than I was. By the time I thought about it, I looked down, and I was somewhere between eight and nine minutes. But I thought, okay. A young lady came in, probably in that seven minutes that John was talking about, I believe, but I didn't know that that's what she was. Then another group came in. My group I was checking on came in about between eight and nine minutes. But I think the one that John counted was the lady, the female that came, I believe.
It was correct.
And she was inside that seven minutes. So, you know, and she was down beside her, you know, working. And so...
So, congratulate them for us.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm probably need help in about five. Thank you.
I wouldn't want to say anything, but since we got started, I might as well. You know, we can talk about, keep talking about eight minutes. Eight minutes, that's the perfect picture. If there's a truck out on another call, it could take a little longer than eight minutes. The eight minutes is, that's the perfect picture. It's not going to always be like that. And perfect example was yesterday. Every truck we had in the county was out at one time yesterday just about all day long. I mean, yesterday was just one of them days. I don't know whether it was full moon or the crows were flying backwards or what. But anyhow, yesterday was, I mean, am I not correct? Yesterday was a crazy day.
We run 75 calls yesterday in the first 12 hours.
So, the eight-minute got stretched yesterday. And I just want to clarify that. You know, the eight-minute, that's the perfect picture. Okay, thank you.
Well, since we're talking about, I'm sorry, the EMS stations, and this is just a global statement to everyone who's involved in that. This is a commission that wants to see the EMS stations be as everything they can be. I'll just leave it at that. Everything they can be, just short of an emergency room. I've always advocated that for southern Wayne County, and I'm not, and nor do Wayne County. I want to see the EMS stations be everything they can be. Thank you.
Other word, Mr. Kamard is not really stating what he really mean. He wants an emergency room-type setup in E.T.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It ain't going to happen.
Okay, we're at public comments time. You might speak before this board. If not, that's closing. That's where our public hearing, Mr. Honeycutt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brandon Gray is here. Brandon is our director at the Wayne Executive Jetport, and I hopefully want to thank Brandon for the work that he has done, especially with the leases and our corporate area expansion, and just really has taken our jetport really to that next level. And also, we've had, as the board's aware, some, trying to do some issues and some upgrades with UNC Health. Brandon's done a great job of finally getting a lease that both sides can agree to, and just wanted to publicly thank Brandon for the work that he's done.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Chairman. So, the leasing that we're discussing here today is a proposal of a period of up to 10 years between Wayne, the Wayne County and UNC Health. They will be occupying exclusively Corporate Hangar Number 2 at the jetport. They'll also have a section of land, a land lease, where they'll be putting their crew facilities for their airmen there. They'll have up to three aircraft in the hangar, and there's a, there's a 10-year, up to a 10-year period of which we've got some flexibility on throughout the lease if they change their mission or the number of aircraft or the aircraft valuation changes. That's where we are. And there, UNC is agreeable to these terms, and Mr. Honeycutt and our legal counsel as well's been through it, and everybody seems to be in agreement.
Do we have any questions or comments?
I just want to thank you for putting this together because it's just been lingering for so long. I appreciate the work you put into it.
About four years now.
Right. Thank you.
Could I ask, when can we expect this to be executed?
Immediately. They're prepared. So, we're...
Yes, the public hearing.
Yes.
Soon as we get there.
Five o'clock today will be fine.
Would anyone like to speak during this public hearing time? Public hearings close. Is it okay to take action today?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Daughery?
I'll move approval rapidly.
Motion's been made. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, please, signal five, raise your right hand. Thank you, Brandon. Appreciate all the work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon.
Great job.
Mr. Honeycutt, unfinished business?
Yes, sir. This is another one of those projects where I'm excited to get wrapped up and moving forward. As the board's aware, we asked for some Golden Leaf funding after Matthew for the replacement of our Genoa pump station route out on 117. Originally, not enough money was asked for during that process, and so, we have not been able to move forward. So, we asked for, we got a new estimate. We asked for additional money. And again, I want to thank our assistant county manager, Chip Crumpler, for the work that he did with Golden Leaf because we've had to go back twice to ask for funding to make sure that this project was fully grant-funded and that no funds came from county dollars. So, we did finally get approval. We have bid it out with the alternate, and we are also recommending the alternate be approved as well. But we received three bids, and the low bid is stepped construction at $394,278.25. And recommendation is that we accept that bid and move forward with this project.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Page made motion to approve. Any discussion?
I do want to say one thing to Chip. He really had to go back to the well. We appreciate it.
Or the list they should have listed.
Whatever's more appropriate.
But we have, we've gone back to the well twice on this project, and as Chip said, Golden Leaf has been phenomenal to work with and the understanding of the process and the understanding of our situation.
Motion's been made. All in favor, please, signal five, raise your right hand. Thank you. Next, considered January due to 8 o'clock this morning, and things are all in order appears, so have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. All those in favor, please, signal five, raise your right hand.
All right. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Wanted to make you aware of something that was in the paper recently. As the board is aware, the school system made us aware of a meeting to begin discussing their redistricting plans with our consultant. And again, this was the intro meeting. I was unaware that this was supposed to be a joint meeting or that we were formally invited. So, that was a misunderstanding on my part, but it was not clear that we were expected to participate. We did not have anyone in attendance because it was an informational meeting. But as my understanding, that they're beginning the process that is going to be a couple-of-year process for the redistricting. But the thing about redistricting, this is a decision that the superintendent and the Board of Education needs to make, not the Board of Commissioners. So, this is a project that they need to do for themselves. But we are, in part of their presentation, was that they have asked for help from county planning and also from G.I.S., and we would like to formally offer that help to them to sit on their planning team, whatever they need. If they would like to have either Chip or myself as well sit on that planning team, we are offering that help at this time. But we're willing to do what we can to help. But again, put it squarely back that it is a decision that the Board of Education must make with respect to redistricting, not the Board of County Commissioners. So, if there's any questions with respect to that?
Mr. Chairman, you kind of, I don't remember exactly what your words were, but it's no mistake of yours. I mean, to my knowledge, any of us knew that they possibly wanted us there. So, you know, that was not your oversight. If it was your oversight, it's all office's oversight. And by the way, I don't see the Boston School Board in here today.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Matter of fact, in the past, we never attend their meetings unless we get invited to attend. I have never gone to one unless I had an invitation.
And usually invitations are a joint request from the chairman to our chairman and as a joint meeting.
The email, the email that was forwarded to me...
Yes, sir.
From the school board that you sent?
Yes, sir.
Had nothing in there that the Wayne, all Wayne County Commissioners are invited or any one of us.
It was a FYI.
It was a FYI, and that was it.
Yes, sir.
So, that should be made clear.
Yes, sir.
Newspapers probably got that, too.
Yes, sir. But also, wanted to remind you again, in looking at our opening up of our EMS stations, the Nahuna EMS station, we have a grand opening set Friday, May 3rd from, what time did you?
9:30.
9:30 till 11:00. Yeah, 9:30 to 11:00. So, we should cut the ribbon probably about quarter to 10:00.
And I have to say, if all of you would like to attend appropriately, since it's in Nahuna, there will be Nahuna pork products for refreshments.
Madam Clerk, would you please have someone invite the fire departments in that area like Nahuna, Fremont, Pikeville, probably Little River?
Yes, sir.
Possibly Belfast, the ones that, that station kind of is in the center of. I think that they need to be invited. I mean, it'd be, you know, 9:30 in the morning. Some of them may not be able to attend, but I think they still need the invitation.
Yes, sir.
And you're sending a calendar request to them?
Yes, sir.
And that is all I have for this time.
Thank you, Mr. Honeycutt. Mr. Mayo?
I probably go a little bit on the negative a little bit this morning. There was a comment made a few minutes ago about our jetport and where it's going. And the comment was, it's taken four years to get to where we're at. Well, the key is it took three years because Commissioner Gurley and I sat on that board. It took three years to get the dang funding that we needed from the DOT. It's easy for somebody to come along after the hard work's done and get the funding and say, "Oh, my gosh, look what we did." I don't, I'm not begrudging that. What I'm saying is, is that George Wood, myself and Commissioner Gurley, as well as others in this room, went to the DOT for three years to get funding. The key is, is that you just don't go over there and say, "Hey, guys, we're here. We want the money." If that was the case, this would have been done. So, I'm going back to the old advisory board that we had at the jetport that did the legwork. Yes, everything is going great right now. But anybody can, if you got the money, you can do it. So, yes, I'm, maybe I'm a little bit negative, but it needs to be said that the previous advisory board at the jetport did the legwork to get to where we're today. Yes, everybody's doing such a great job, and that's good. That's good. But I'm going to give credit where credit is due. Mr. Gurley, you were a big part of that. You and I were, okay? So, having said that, I'm done with that. Let's go to the next one. I have a comment and some news to bring to the commission board. All the commissioners know about this. With a little bit of a heavy heart, as chairman of the Department of Social Services Board, we have received a letter of resignation from Tammy Schrenker, our DSS director. And I wanted... And I wanted to share this publicly, and also the Commissioners, I think already know. But Tammy, I've known about this for about 3, 4 weeks. She confided in me that she was praying, her and her husband were praying about this situation, that she had an opportunity to move back to closer to her home county. She's got grandchildren that's possibly on the way. It was, this was a struggle for her. And so, but we met with a, we met in a special session yesterday morning with the DSS Board to inform our Board as to her resignation. Tammy was there, and the DSS Board agrees that we're going to be fine. We have an Assistant Director, and we'll be making some decisions along these lines at our next DSS meeting, which has been changed for your convenience to the 22nd to the 29th, because 22nd is Easter Monday. So what we're going to do is to change that to the 29th, same time, same place. But having said that, I wanted to read you Tammy's letter of resignation, which is dated April 15. She says, Dear Wayne County Department of Social Services Board, I would like to inform you that I am resigning from my position as Director for the Wayne County Department of Social Services effective May 24, 2019. Thank you for the support and the opportunities that you have provided me. I have truly enjoyed my tenure with Wayne County. If I can be of any assistance during this transition in order to facilitate the seamless passing of my responsibilities to my successor, please let me know. I would be glad to help however I can. In addition to that, I'm allowed today, after everything has been put in place, is that Tammy is actually taking another DSS Director position in Moore County, that's right, Moore County, which is next door to her home county. So she's able to move back, and of course, let's keep in mind, when she came here 2 years ago, she was, she was going to give us 45 years. That was her max when she took the job. Well, you know, she's probably maybe a year too soon, and I asked, I told her, I said, you know, we need another year, but that's okay. We got people, we got people that are capable. We feel like that going forward, that we'll be fine. We have people in place already. So having said that, I just wanted to let the Board know that on our meeting the 29th, we will be taking and making recommendations to the Board of Commissioners as to the process that we need to go through to move forward. Mr. Craig, do you have any?
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. Do want to thank Tammy for the work that she's done for Wayne County. And again, she stepped in at a very difficult time as we were going from transition, but she really has done some reorganization, she really has stepped up our game. We've been very lucky and blessed to have her for the time that we have had her, and we're a much better DSS organization now moving forward. And as Commissioner Mayo said, I think we are now in a good position that we have alternatives moving forward, and thanks to Tammy's leadership. So it is big shoes to fill, but we, I think, will be fine and strong moving forward as well. So we want to thank Tammy for what she did.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Carmody?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also serve on the DSS Board. I was out of town yesterday and communicated with Mr. Mayo by telephone, and he kept me abreast of the meeting. I would like to congratulate Tammy on the great work she's done in meetings. It's always been very professional, tries to be very thorough, and I too think she, you know, people forecast in a way what they have to do when you're dealing with need to move to a certain place for your family, and that's what professional employees do. You may move, but that means that if you move one time, you may have to move again. And as I understand it, it becomes a situation of what's best for the family, and that's what folk have to do. But I also think she's made moves inside of the department to ensure that we have a strong DSS department moving forward, have all the confidence in the world that the recent decisions that have been made are made for the long-term good of Wayne County, and that's what's really important. Just to add to that, the large number of folk that are out here this morning to receive pens is very encouraging. It's encouraging to see folk that have served 35 years, but it's encouraging to see people who are in their first year, because that says that folk still want to come to work for Wayne County and believe that this is a good place to come to work. So I congratulate all of our employees, especially the DSS Director, but all of our employees who come to serve, as well as the volunteers. Thank you.
Mr. Daughery?
I had one of those conversations today that is a little bit out of character for I really am greatly concerned, and I think a lot of people in the county are concerned in regards to the squabble that we are currently having with our fellow board members over the schools. And I reflect on how we as a nation are looking at those fights on the national level and on the state level. A lot of this has to do with communication. I served on this board for some 6 years, and during that period of time, the relationship between the school board and the Board of Commissioners was exemplary. In fact, people bragged about the relationship. And that relationship came about not by happenstance, but because we communicated. We're not communicating, folks. We're not sitting down and communicating. I, for one, as a board member, want to offer an olive branch over to the school board and say, I apologize if anything that I have said has exacerbated that problem. I think it's a long time that the school board and the Board of Commissioners come together and find a resolution before this thing gets out of hand. You know, you sit back and you see friends that start to battle over small things, and they become stronger and more at odds with one another, and it blows up to a complete falling out. When in fact, if they had only communicated a little bit in the very beginning, it never would have gotten to that point. I really think it's time that we lay aside those things that have happened in the past, the bruised feelings, and we find, and we sit down, find a way to come together and find a way to work again together for the betterment of Wayne County. Very difficult position for me to be in, but I think that it's time that we all find and we move into areas that we're not comfortable with. Let's come together.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Mayo? Mr. Commissioner Daughery, I'd like to make one little correction. Back in the early 2000, we used to have little squabbles and disarray, and I renamed it Intense Fellowship. And it got better. So maybe we need to go back to Intense Fellowship, not the squabble. But I don't have any regular committee meetings this time, but I did meet with Kamala Lee, and we toured the probation and parole facilities and made a couple of little changes, not anything that needed to come before the board, but just some, where an office would be set up over there. And matter of fact, we're going to save money in the fixing of the buildings over there because of the way we're going to lay it out, you know? And still, the probation and the juvenile people are going to have the same number of spaces, if not more, and it's going to work much better, you know? And having fixed where the juvenile people would not be able to communicate or go into the same interest as adult probation, which is illegal. So it's all working out for good. Y'all need to take a trip over there and see what our facility people are doing to those of new facilities. Matter of fact, it's looking so good over there, and to the people in Raleigh think that I'm a hero. They think I did it all by myself. But I had to let them know that I had 6 other people, plus the county manager and other people that were working to facilitate this, these facilities. So thanks a lot to all you guys, and I told them that you all had a part in it. Mr. Schrecker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, this time of the year is busy for all of us, you know, springtime. There's something going on about every day, every night, and it's so numerous that I won't even go into any detail, so that's all I have today, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Page.
Going there the last, you don't have a lot of opportunity because all the good stuff's been used up. But there's a lot of wisdom in the words that Commissioner Daughery just said, and we've got to find a way to get back together, because it's about educating our kids as well this is about. And I'm not picking on Mr. West at all, but he was talking about the need of facilities at $160 million. I did what, 12 and 1/2 cents on the increase on our, yeah, of course, I'm sure he didn't mean all that at one time. But there are huge needs in facilities and schools, there are huge needs in facilities for the rest of the county. We'll make a new jail airport tomorrow, because this one's falling apart next door. We're trying to work on relocating our DSS department. That's going to be several million dollars. We need a new health department. And we're trying to save as much money as we can by staff doing the work that John just talked about just then. But we also got to really remember who's paying for this, and that's all the taxpayers. And I hate to keep repeating this, but right now, you know, we've got our agriculture community that's been hammered by 2 hurricanes in 3 years. We've lost some big farmers, some are going to come out and not have any crops this year. We've got to bridge a little bit of gap, give those guys a chance to recover, not to mention those people who were flooded out of their homes, because I know they get a reduced tax on their homes anyway. But if we sit down together like he was suggesting, and we look at each other's plans, then we can prepare the tax increases that we need to cover all this funding. None of us can bite it off, and even one big bite, there's just no way to do it. That would be, as I was saying, that would be putting this fork in the green mouth for Wayne County, and we don't want to do that. So we're adults, we can sensibly sit down together and find a way to make this work. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Most everything's been covered. I would like to say, I hope everyone has a chance to attend church and worship this Sunday for what observance of Easter is a very special time in my life and very special time in a lot of people. So ask everybody to attend church and enjoy theirselves, enjoy their spring break. So we're going to close session now, Craig.
Yes, same thing you went in before.
Same as before. Have a motion. Mr. Chairman? Yes. Let me just make this comment briefly. I think I need to give a shout out to our county manager, because I'm just sitting here thinking about the position that we put him in, negotiating with other board members and other citizens of Wayne County. And it's got to be a tremendous effort on your part to be able to go over there and smooth things out and make it work. So thanks a lot for your efforts.
Thank you. I wish you could go to a close session.
Wish you could go to a close session. Go move.